Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Diaz-Loco.
Here.
President McAvoy.
Present. All right, well, welcome everyone to our workforce housing study session. We're so excited to have all of you here and to be able to give this update to the board and our community on where we're at with workforce housing. And I just looked at the attendees. I don't believe we have any Spanish speakers, so I think we're set there. And let's see, changes to the agenda? Any changes to the agenda? All right, approval of agenda? Do I have a motion?
Move, so move.
Maria. Maria's a motion and Cecilia's a second, I think is what I saw. Roll call, please, vote.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Trustee Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Loco.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, so we've got up until about 6:55 tonight for our study session, so we'll just jump right in. And Dr. Baker, I'll turn it over to you if you'd like to introduce the update on the workforce housing. Are you muted?
Well, thank you so much. So, good evening, everyone. So we are going to give you an update on where we are with workforce housing. And our consultant, Peter Ingram, is going to definitely provide the presentation for you. I know Alisa, along with Janet, and I have been working very closely with this project for the last couple of years. And we're hopefully going to get it moving down the track where we can get a planner, right, Peter Si? So we're hoping about that. So, Peter Ingram, I'm gonna let you take it from here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Superintendent. Can everybody hear me okay? Yeah, great. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and it's a real honor to work on this project with the district. I've had the good fortune to work with your committee, two of your trustees and superintendent for a couple of months now. So I think I'm no longer sort of the newbie, but seem to have caught up with progress quite quickly and really commend the district for the early steps that you've taken to set up this project. So tonight, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen here if technology works with us. And can everybody see that okay? All right. So so tonight, I've got a fairly short set of slides that I want to run through with you all. And hopefully, it'll provide enough information to generate a really good discussion once I've got through the slides. We've got team members from Sobrato Organization with us, Peter Si and Sierra. And they can field any questions that are specific to project design or the city application process or other sort of more development centric questions. And then I'd like to just hand it back to the board and the community for discussion and field any questions you may have. So tonight, we're gonna give a quick update on where the project is. We're gonna talk about the survey results, the data that we've seen from that survey. We're gonna talk about kind of early and speculative unit mix and unit count for a project. I want to spend some time on governance and management and share what we've learned so far, what other school districts are doing around that piece. And then just outline the next steps. So to jump right in, you, several of you may have seen this before in materials that came to you before the gatekeeper application with the city. This is the massing, what's called the massing of the project. So your, your current, your district office currently is here on Bradford Street and the corner has a one-story office building on it currently. I want to point out that affordable housing for teachers and your workforce, you're joining a great neighborhood. Right now, this mass right here is the Habitat for Humanity project that is now framed out. It'll have 20 units, 20 condominiums, which are first-time homebuyer affordable. And across the street from your current office, you probably know that you've got a really large senior housing project that's just about to open. There's over 100 apartments in that project. So this little neighborhood, you know, this little chunk of downtown has really turned its attention toward providing a full range of housing options. These are images from the gatekeeper application that the city council was presented with some months ago. You've probably seen these before. This is what a project could look like. But again, it's, it's really early, so it's more about kind of the massing and the scale of the building that's envisioned. So the housing building is in the front and the office is on the left toward the back. And here's another image taken from across the street from your current office. So the project would essentially be sharing underground parking, an underground parking structure. And the office building and the housing building would essentially live on top of that. So where we are as of today, you again have accomplished quite a few of your early steps. So there's a memorandum of understanding that the districts entered into with Sobrato Organization. And we consider that to be fully operational right now. There is a lot of activity. The gatekeeper application was approved by the city council several months ago. What that means is that the city council has essentially green-lighted this project and some others in the downtown to move ahead with submittal of an application. The workforce housing committee, your two trustee board members and your superintendent have been working with us. We now have onboard, in fact, you've had onboard for some time a financing consultant. And we'll soon have a cost estimator to help us go through the due diligence, which I'm gonna talk about in a few minutes. We've also established a project timeline that is a combination of aggressive to try to make sure we keep the momentum and keep this moving forward. But that we also design in time for due diligence, public engagement, and especially engagement with your community. And then finally, the development application that goes into the city that starts the review process of the project is now being developed by the Sobrato team. So what did we learn from the survey that went out to all of your employees? You'll recall that the district asked the housing endowment organization in San Mateo County to conduct that survey on your behalf. We have seen data. We have not seen a final report, which will come to the district in a few months, we think. And that'll have a lot more in-depth information about your current community of employees and what their needs and desires are around housing. But we do have enough data to get that first, most important snapshot of what in the, in the development world is essentially considered testing demand. So is there demand for housing if the district were to move ahead with a rental housing project? And indeed, there sure is. We learned that people consider living in downtown Redwood City attractive. There's clearly a higher demand than we previously may have considered. So the takeaway message is, yes, there's demand and yes, the more units we can build, the better. So that's at a high level of kind of the takeaway from that survey. This next slide shows some of the data that is probably most important early on to just give some guidance to how we think about the combination of units in the building. So you can see that when your employees were surveyed on what type of unit they would ideally want and what's the smallest they could live in. You can read across from left to right for studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom. Not surprisingly, people would like bigger units, but when you ask the follow-up question about if you can't have that, what's the smallest, the numbers do change. And this again is a very early snapshot, so it's subject to much more refinement as we get deeper into the project. This next slide shows what the early preliminary and again, will change mix of housing units might be. So on the left in the blue numbers, you'll see the percentages from the prior slide. The committee that is working with the development team right now is starting to think about, okay, so those numbers, what do they suggest and what other factors or variables should we be considering as we turn those dials up and down toward a mix of units in our project? So one of the things that we've done is reached out to other organizations in the education world that are out ahead of you on employee housing. And the good news is, is they've been doing this for a while, so there's lots of good information and good learning out there. We've got the Jefferson Union High School District that's broken ground on their project in Daly City. And probably the model that's most talked about in this space is the San Mateo County Community College District. And they're two going on three housing projects on their campuses. So you can see on the right what the final mix of units are on the Jefferson project. And it's it's worth noting that the mix for San Mateo County Community College District is almost the same. There's just a slight difference in percentages in the one and two-bedroom counts. Both of those projects did not build studios. They ultimately decided that they had more flexibility. And the project provided more options without studios, but really focusing on a range of one-bedroom type units. So we've got good things to learn from other organizations that are in this same vicinity and in the same housing market. On the unit count, when we went in with the gatekeeper, originally, the approximate numbers that were used for that application show on the left under the joint gatekeeper application. And so you can see that that project went into the city initially as 68 units. Since that was received by the city and ultimately approved by the city council, your subcommittee has been working on the question of how could we get more units? Is, is it possible? And if so, how do we do that? So we would like to think that when we go in with an application in May that starts the city's participation in the project, that we could up the number of units to perhaps as many as 86. And there's a lot of variables at play with that, so please know that these numbers are preliminary, but I think that they indicate that already there is a clear focus on trying to achieve a higher number, number of units for this project, even as we are putting together the application. The short-term goals that are important here is that we really need to get an application into the city as soon as we can. Redwood City is really, really busy with development applications. And there is a lot of projects out on the short-term horizon that are talking about submitting applications in the near future. The, just like any organization, the city staff can only process so many projects at a time. So we really want to be in as soon as we can. That is really in the district's best interest because it gets you the partnership, the other partner in this mix that you need, which is the city. It also allows for the beginning of outreach and community engagement. And it means that we'll be constantly keeping the community apprised of progress as we work forward. So I want to spend just a few moments on this slide. When I spoke with both the college district and the high school district, one of the things that I heard loud and clear from both organizations and from the people who are managing those efforts is that probably the, in fact, the quote that I wrote down is, "Our wisest decision that we made as an organization was recognizing that we need a separate entity to govern and manage a housing project on school district property." And so we think that that makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons. It doesn't mean that the board wouldn't continue to set policy and make the key decisions about the project. But it means that as you get further down the road and you're approaching a time when you're actually gonna start construction, you really want to spend some time setting up a separate entity. It could be a nonprofit. The college district has a nonprofit housing board that is appointed by the trustees. And I believe Jefferson is a similar model. They have not yet started that, but they will soon because they've broken ground. So key pieces of that is, you know, the management and sustaining of, of a, of a living place. A place filled with families that are tenants of the district. So this entity would select tenants. They would establish maximum occupancy durations. Implementing board rental policy and annual increases would be a part of their responsibility. Establishing rules and setting expectations. And then, of course, really importantly, overseeing the maintenance and management of the building. So those are all things that are further out in the process, but just really important because it will be, it'll be to the district's advantage to make sure that there's separation between the educational world in which you work and operate and this housing project that would serve some of your employees. Next steps. So we are targeting May for submittal of a joint application to the city. And once that's happened, that really kind of officially begins the district's due diligence process to really turn over all the rocks and explore all the options and make sure we thoroughly understand costs and benefits as the project matures. That process with the city will go on for several months. We think that by August, we should have staff comments back. And that's sort of the first response we would get back from the city. So then we would resubmit. And then during the time between August and October, there would be additional work to be done with board decisions and actions. And then a final submittal, we hope, would be by October, which would lead to what is a really important milestone in the development process, which is that the application becomes deemed complete by city staff, which then triggers a notification to the city's universe that they're gonna begin an environmental review of the project and begin the entitlement process with the planning commission and the city council. So as you can see, once May is here, there are a lot of things that will begin to happen as soon as that event of submitting the application. So this is the last slide and I, I want to point out that, again, we're talking about the period roughly from May to October when the district has a lot of work to do. So there'll be outreach and input from your community. The board has made it clear that at the end of the day, they want a project that best serves the district in as many ways as it possibly can. So we will be analyzing options and trying to optimize what ends up being the best option that comes forward for your project. The board with our support will be asked to set goals for affordable housing rents. We'll be doing a lot of cost estimating, studying the financing. And we also need to address the very important aspect of how to replace your district office. And again, community outreach and input. Those are on there twice because they are really important and the board and your committee have made it clear that this will be an iterative conversation with the community until the very end of the project. So I'm gonna stop there and I'm going to leave this on the screen so that we can move up and down the slides as may be desired. And I think I will turn this back to the superintendent and the chair of your board at this point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation, Peter. Dr. Baker, did you have anything to add before I talk to the board?
No, that's just very exciting because we have been talking about this for years. And to see it coming to a point where we're really moving forward is quite astonishing. I mean, other superintendents who have broken ground or are going in this direction has taken them longer than it's taken the Redwood City School District within the last couple of years to get where we are right now. Not, not taken as long as they took. So I'm quite impressed with the partnership and the work that we have done with Sobrato to get us to this point. And also bringing Peter on as our consultant to work closely with ourselves and the Sobrato Organization to really get this piece really cemented in a position to where, hey, it's going to happen, ground's gonna break, building's gonna come down, probably relatively soon, maybe in the next few years, if everything works out right. I never anticipated this to happen this quickly. I don't know about yourselves as board members who have been with us for a while, Maria, Janet, Alisa, Cecilia, but it's happening, which is great, just great for, for our employees that work with us here in the Redwood City School District.
All right, thank you. So, yeah, I totally agree with everything you just said, Dr. Baker. It's very exciting. And I've really enjoyed being on this committee and helping to make, to get us to the place we're at today. So I did want to offer, we have Peter Si and Sierra Sousa from Sobrato. I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add. I know you're here to answer questions if there's more specific things that come your way, but I'd like to give you an opportunity to say something before I move to talk to the board.
Yeah, this is Peter Si from the Sobrato Organization. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, what Dr. Baker said. You know, this has been a great kind of team effort. I know that, you know, Dr. Baker and the rest of you guys have a lot on your plate. And to be able to move, you know, so quickly on this has been great. So we really appreciate and enjoy working with you guys and look forward to continuing. So that's all I have to say. And Sierra and I are here with, answer any questions that you guys may have.
All right, so we don't have any comment cards from the public, so this will be a conversation with the board. I did want to say, I hope the other members have noticed who are not on the committee, that we are moving in the direction of providing additional units. Sorry, got a call coming in that I can't stop. This is Zoom for you. Sorry about that. Why don't I see if there's any comments, questions, and then I'll come back to what I wanted to say. Oh, there we go. I think it stopped. Okay. What I wanted to say is just that the good news is we're moving in the direction from the original proposal with 68 units. And we're getting to a place where I believe we can do more like 86 units. And as Peter and Dr. Baker said, we'll still have continuing work with Sobrato and during the planning session with the city to see if there's opportunities for additional units. But what we did hear from the city council during the gatekeepers and staff is that we do need more units. So I'm really happy that we're getting to more units than we had in the gatekeeper, which is great. So let me go ahead and turn it over and see. I know Janet, you're also on the committee. If you'd like to say anything or have any additional questions or comments, and then we can hear from the other three board members.
I don't have anything additional to add right now. I'm happy to hear questions and, and conversation from the other board members.
Alisa, can I go?
Okay, Maria, Cecilia, Mike?
I wanted, I noticed that Janet said Dennis is in the audience and I would like to take this opportunity to really thank him for all the work that he did before his departure on the board to get us to this place. He is always been very giving of his time. And I know he put in a lot of effort and is very knowledgeable in this area because he serves in the community college board. Similar to this project. Though I do have one question or a couple. How many stories are, is the building going to be now? I noticed that we're adding additional units. So does that mean we're adding floors as well or no?
Peter, do you want to take that question?
Yeah. Can you hear me? Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. Yeah, we have not changed the number of floors. At this point, we're simply rethinking the, the floor plates. So we're going in with this application at the current maximum height or number of floors that would be allowed for the site on that corner. Peter, keep me honest here. If I'm misrepresenting that, I'm pretty sure that's true.
Yeah, just to clarify, we are, we are adding an extra floor. We're staying within the same height. So, yeah.
All right, sorry.
So in reevaluating the original gatekeeper process, we looked at it and said, I think we can squeeze in an extra floor. So within the same envelope of the original application, we're able to squeeze in another floor, which equates to, you know, roughly, you know, 14, 15-ish odd units. But as Peter Ingram did say, we are playing around with the floor plate and the unit mixes to see what, you know, we, what the optimal, you know, mix and count is. You know, that's always the, the puzzle here. You know, you always want more, but then you also want more of the right type of units and how we can balance that out is what we're trying to figure out right now.
Okay, so what was the maximum height that we could have?
77 feet.
Okay, so if you're adding a floor, does that mean the units are gonna be like shorter, closer?
Yeah, the, the floor-to-floor heights will be a little bit tighter. However, they're still very acceptable. You know, they're, I think they'll be, I think nine foot, nine and a half foot floor to ceiling. So they still will be very comfortable. We're, we're, we're not gonna cram everyone into.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so we've done comparisons with other projects and, you know, the residential architect that we're working with is very familiar with this product type. And they're very comfortable with adding an extra level. So, so we're confident in doing that.
Okay. And then the other question I have is where is the district office going to go?
That remains to be explored and options identified.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we really haven't got there yet, but as soon as that application is in for the project and we've got that space and time, it's definitely high on our checklist.
Great. And I'm just really pleased that it's moving ahead as fast as it is. Thank you, Peter. And Peter, everybody else that has worked on it. Thank you, Peter and Peter, everybody else that has worked on it. I'm really impressed to see that we've added additional units. So with that, I'll turn it over to my other colleague.
Yeah, Maria, let me also just make a comment about the district office. I'm glad you brought that up. All along, almost at every meeting, I think we brought it up with Sabrato that that needs to be a part of the whole package that we're putting together and that we will need assistance around the office. We still need to have those conversations about what that might look like. But do know that that's definitely one of the listed items. We know we need a district office. So thank you for highlighting that because that is part of what we need to come up with. And whether that's on the existing footprints that are there, the office and residential, if it's at the same location or if it's at a different location. With our public-private partnership with Sabrato, we would need some assistance around that office building, most likely to make the whole package work for us. So yes. We need, we'll need a place for Dr. Baker and his team to work.
And if I may add.
Go ahead, Peter.
This project's a mixed youth project, so we have a residential architect as well as an office architect. And we've volunteered, or I should say, I think the office architect volunteered himself to help the district study kind of what their, what the needs are in terms of office space. You know, meeting space, office space and everything else. And I think once we kind of wrap our arms around that, it'll, it'll be easier to figure out, you know, where the district office goes. Does this office in this location make sense? Or is it, does it not make sense for the find another location for it? But, you know, we are very much aware that, that that has to be something that's resolved. But I think understanding, you know, the district needs is kind of the first step in the process. So, you know, the team, you know, the office team is very busy right now doing the application. But we will, you know, change our sights on the district office needs, you know, shortly, yeah, in the near future. So.
Yeah, good.
And one of the things I might add, Peter, I think you, I think you touched upon this in your presentation. But one of our goals is to get the application in as soon as possible. So we get a city planner and that Sabrato, with their years of experience working through the city planning process, there, there is an iterative approach that happens with the city planner. So there will be opportunities to continue refining our proposal, our application. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peter Tsai, if I'm saying that incorrectly. But, but I know that there were some questions that came up. Is this the final, final proposal? And generally speaking, there is this sort of iterative process that, that occurs with the city through the planning process. Is that correct? Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, so there, there are multiple rounds, let's say. It depends on how complete the comments are from the city. When we have our first initial application go in, you know, all the different city departments chime in. It's not just planning. You'll have fire, you'll have public works, you'll have the police, you'll have everyone kind of comment. And then we take those comments and, and figure out how do we address it in the project? So it's that iterative process that kind of goes back and forth. It's, you know, very much like, you know, community outreach. You want to have as many comments from all the different stakeholders. And, you know, you need to know, you know, how fire, you know, wants to address this building as well as police. And so it very much is an iterative process. You know, and so, you know, as Peter Ingram had mentioned, you know, Redwood City has a lot of projects in right now. And so to process all these different applications takes time and manpower. And so we're trying to get in as quickly as possible to kind of get our foot in the door and begin things. So.
Yeah, and I just might add, my observation is that especially housing projects tend to change often when they're in that back and forth with the applicant and the city. And because you're the district and you've got a relationship with the city that's different than the private sector, we really have this, what I would consider like an ideal triangular partnership between Sabrato, the district and the city, so we can really do as much as we can to maximize your project while it's with the city in that iterative process. So we've seen many examples in both Redwood City and up and down the peninsula where an initial application goes in and by the time it's deemed complete, sometimes the projects change radically based on either the applicant or the city or both just working through the problems and trying to reconcile the different challenges and opportunities. So it's, you're, you're in a really good place going in because of who you are and the relationship that you, you have with the city. Doesn't mean it's going to be easy, though.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, well, we definitely value our city partners. And, you know, when we went through the gatekeeper process, we heard from city council members and we took their comments to heart when we went back into the process. And I think already you can see that we are, we are trying to get more residential units. And we did hear that from the city council that that was something that they desired. So, so that's, that's good. That is part of the process. Okay, so Mike and Cecilia, comments, questions?
So I would like to say the same. That is very exciting to see this project. And my only question would be, since we are adding another, what I think 13 units, actually more than that, I think that was just a one bedroom. The additional units, are we also considering what the parking is going to look like? I know I see that there was a six units for a three bedroom. And so just wondering, you know, again, if we've thought about parking, I know that's always a big issue. So that, that's my only question.
Peter Ingram, do you want me to take that one?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you, yeah.
Yeah, so one of the, you know, synergies of this project is actually sharing the parking. And so, you know, typically with an office project, you know, people are in from the hours of, you know, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And for most residential projects, the, you know, most used time for parking is around, you know, 6 o'clock to 7:00 AM. And so what we're using here is a shared parking concept. You know, people don't realize this, but parking is one of the most expensive costs within a project. And by, by being able to share the parking, we're able to create a better project overall. And so, you know, when the office tenants vacate, there will be an abundance of parking for the residential stalls. I think there are something in the range of 300 odd parking stalls. So there will be plenty of parking for the residents.
So with that said, and I, and I remember you guys had mentioned that. Have we also thought about what happens if the residents don't leave to work? You know, let's just say as early as the employees are getting or arriving to the district, now that there's so much, you know, going around the city and parking, it's an issue with that bigger issue, especially for the employees trying to get to work on time.
Yeah, and so, you know, we've realized that parking is becoming, you know, more and more of a design consideration. And so we've looked into different types of parking such as mechanized parking. We've also looked at kind of a partial valet system that would help people, you know, during those transition hours that you were mentioning to park cars, you know, in the drive aisles behind and start, you know, funneling more cars. You see this happen in a, in a more car centric, you know, area such as Los Angeles. We think though, that in this location, because it's so close to the Redwood City Caltrain Station and with Caltrain electrifying and having more trains being run in the future, this is very much a TOD project. And so we will have more parking that's needed. And the office workers will probably prefer to come in via train, public transportation wise. That, that's, that's kind of what we've seen. You give someone the option of being able to take a train and then walk versus being stuck on the 101 and they'll take the train all day long.
Yeah, and there's also.
Yeah, and I did want to mention. Go ahead, Peter.
I was just going to footnote that there's probably some sort of an assigned parking agreement that comes out of the work ahead of us. So that they'll be, it'll be understood that each part of the project has some percentage of their total need that's reserved. And again, that's just one of the many, many details that we need to work out as we move forward. So I think at the end of the day, what your residents are going to want to know is if I'm, if I'm not operating on sort of normal hours or using my car a lot, will I be okay? And we'll make sure that we, as Peter said, that there's enough capacity that the different scenarios will not prove challenging.
And, and, you know, people don't realize this, but there are specific parking consultants, design consultants, that this is all they do is design garages. We, we joke about it, but they really do kind of nerd out on this stuff. And it's really is kind of exciting seeing kind of different parking concepts that come out of, you know, Europe and Asia that haven't quite been adopted here in the United States, but are kind of gaining more and more traction. So, you know, these are all things that are on the table that we are exploring, not only with just this project, but with other projects, you know, that we have in the Bay Area.
And I also wanted to mention that we have talked about having some bicycle parking as well. There'll be bicycling, you know, areas that people can lock up their bicycles. And we would hope that certainly some of our employees might want that option to be able to bike, particularly with this location depending upon where they work. So. Else, before we move to Mike? All right, Mike?
Okay, I don't have much more to add. I like the direction of adding more units. I think that makes sense. I remember in the gatekeeper city council hearing, there were a couple of council members that were very enthusiastic for developments with three bedrooms. And given the poll results there, makes sense to add some in that as well. So I like that direction. Janet and Elisa and Dennis before you, thanks for serving on the, on the committee. I can see that there's a lot of work that goes into it. So that, I really appreciate that. As far as the gatekeeper process goes, can you remind me, are there timelines? Are there deadlines that we should be aware of or specific dates? I can't remember if it had dates when certain things had to be accomplished. Or is it okay because everything in these next steps are, are in there? Or are we running up to any deadline that might, might put in jeopardy our gatekeeper approval?
Your gatekeeper is good for two years from when it was approved. And so we're well within that envelope at this time. Yep.
It sounds good. Thanks.
The only thing is there's other projects that are coming in. So we just want to, you know, avoid the rush as much as we can. But, you know, one of those things, as soon as you have an application and you have a seat at the table and can start talking to the city, before you have an application, it's just more conceptual and theoretical. When you put something in front of them, then, you know, we can really start talking to the city about process and procedures. So.
Um, Elisa, I have another question.
Please go.
So looking at the number of units and listening to the height restrictions, do I remember correctly that if we kept our original site, the height restriction was higher? So we could go up more, thus having more units?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And so part of the due diligence work ahead of us is to make sure that we test height limits and unit count to make sure you're getting as many as you could possibly build. And in fact, one of my tasks ahead is to model out, what if you built just housing on your site? Does that get you more units, a better project or not? So we'll eventually have a way to show you the pros and cons of the different approaches that are, that are optional. We think this is probably the way to get the maximum of everything you're going to need, parking, units, unit count. But yeah, you're, you're recalling correctly that there is a difference in current limitations on each of those parcels.
Okay, and then if we go that route, we could still explore the parking options where we could do it jointly, so it benefits both organizations that are working together, right, as well? Or is it just exploring building on one site without doing anything jointly?
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's one of the options we want to flesh out, both in terms of, you know, net outcome as well as cost. So you have something to compare other options within this arrangement where we're sharing and jointly developing. So to kind of give you, I guess another way of saying it is that it would give you a baseline to understand if I'm looking at a cost of X to do this project and we're somewhere in the 80, 90 unit bracket and we're, and we're sharing as it's been described, what am I comparing it against? And how do I answer the question, are you sure this is the best project for your district?
Okay, great. That, that's kind of what I want because I was just thinking, you know, there's a lot of need and as the city council members were stating, they would really like us to have more housing. So I would like to see those two compare and see which option is best for our district, being that I want to make sure that our employees can take advantage of this opportunity as much as possible.
Yeah, Maria, thank you for that question and comment. I will say, we have not done a detailed analysis of what it would look like if we built on our own site, independent of Sabrato. But what I can say is I think it would be complicated to get the parking that we need. There's a culvert that goes, you know, and particularly, potentially the water in the, in the kind of creek that's there. So it's a little harder to do the amount of parking we would need on our own for residential if we didn't have the shared parking concept. The shared parking is, is probably what initially brought us together. And I think it would be difficult for either of us to do it without the shared parking. Now that, again, we haven't done the specific calculations and we, we do plan on doing that as a part of our due diligence. Oh, we did look at, you know, one of the, and again, we haven't done detailed analysis. We did look at exactly that. What if we did the residential on our site and the office was on the Sabrato site? And I'm trying to remember at a high level why we moved out of that again. But again, we'll be looking at the details around that, I think, you know, just to, just to double check or confirm. But I don't know, Peter or Peter, if you want to comment on that? Because I know we did talk about that at a couple of our committee meetings.
Peter, I'm not recalling with a lot of clarity some of those quick snapshot options that we went through. But I think, I think I agree that they, they were sort of a very high level first cut and, and don't have a lot of detail with them. But there, I, I do recall that, you know, your architect acknowledged that, gosh, there's a whole bunch of different ways you could do this project. It's really just finding, looking for the sweet spot to get as much of, of what is needed and the best balance possible.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of reaching the sweet spot. The other thing I was thinking of when Elisa brought up bicycling, that that may be a way of accomplishing getting more units and maybe meeting the parking requirements. And then Peter Tsai also mentioned public transit. So that would be another thing. Also, there's the parking structures around the area. There's public parking from the city. And now I see that the county is also putting up this massive parking structure that, that, you know, is usually available as well for people. So anyway. that, you know, is usually available as well for people. So anyway, I would like to see those comparisons and see which one would be best for everyone.
Okay.
All right. So were there any other questions from the board members or comments? So before we wrap up, because I do see Dennis McBride in the audience. Thank you, Maria, for highlighting that. And I just wanted to say that, you know, Dennis and I were on this committee when it was Dr. Baker, Dennis and I were really rolling up our sleeves and trying to do work that was very much out of our comfort zone and expertise. And so I just want to say, you know, thank you, Dennis, for getting us to the place we're at. It's been a welcome to have Janet join the team as well as Peter Ingram, who's really providing, I think, a lot of expertise to our district that we very much needed. And so, and thank you Sabrato for working with us and keeping us moving. We appreciate that. And Dr. Baker, anything that you would like to say and final remarks?
No, just looking forward to us continuing and getting our planner, get the application in and get our planner so the planner get us where we need to be and just moving the project forward. Thanking everybody who definitely has supported this project since the beginning. Of course, Dennis is there with us, and now Janet. But we need, I'm looking forward to it. Just it's on the track and let's just move it along.
Great. All right. I was just looking one more time to make sure we didn't have any comment cards from the community and we do not. So you know, this has been sort of our community outreach and had an opportunity to share with the community where we're at, answer questions. And I think the next steps was on Peter's slide. We'll be moving forward with the city application and doing some of the due diligence we talked about tonight. And moving forward together and hopefully getting some condos, apartments, housing for our workforce. All right. So good timing, everybody. We have our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. So I think if there's nothing more to say, I will ask for an adjournment for somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, before we do that, I'll just say, you know, Sabrato, Peter and Sierra, I know you guys are chomping at the bit to get the application in and get a planner assigned. So I think this was kind of a final step before you guys really dive into that. And so I think you've got a lot of work ahead of you, right, in the coming months. But thank you for, for that work and looking forward to. I know this has been a lot of a kind of I thinks and maybes at this meeting tonight, but I think once we get the application in and a planner assigned, we'll be able to firm things up a lot better as we move forward in the, in the months.
Definitely.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Janet, Cecilia?
Thank you, everybody, much.
Oh, I guess, I guess we want to, we'll just say, okay, all those in favor, I to adjourn. Okay, thank, thank you Sabrato for being here. Thank you, Peter Ingram. Really appreciate your assistance. And we'll see you at the next meeting for those that are joining us.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.